I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Stacy Green.
Present.
Councilmember Bob Hall.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Palphini. Councilmember Susan Tavallaro.
Here.
Mayor Kim Green.
Here. Non-agenda public comment. This is the time if any public in the audience would like to speak on anything that is not on... Yeah, it is. Not on the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry. Doesn't look like we have anything. All right. Councilmember announcements. Councilman Hall?
I don't have anything to report this month, Ms. Mayor.
Councilman Green?
Yes, Ms. Mayor. I attended the Siskiyou Economic Summit that Tim, our city manager, spoke at on Monday, and was so just smiling ear to ear, the way he presented. He's a good speaker, as you know. But it kind of caught me off guard because one of the pictures he talked about the fire was my home, and I said, "Oh," and I lost it. But he explained what the efforts have been done, what's going on, and the efforts going forward. And it was just complete, everyone was like glued to the posting, and there was a lot of snow going over there, but we made it back safe. But it was a great presentation, and I was proud to, just proud. I was like, yay, yay. He talked about the future, what we're looking at, past, and his bright forward, and very concise and no notes. And everybody just enjoyed it. So I was appreciative. So thank you for that, as being part of that. That's all I have.
Councilman Palphini?
Well, we'll start off with, I believe, almost all the residents of the Mill Fire have found places to lay their heads for the winter, I'm suspecting. We do have a couple still left in motels, so, but we're trying to finish that up. Brian from the county is working on it. Tim helped locate all the spots, so I think it has been a joint effort. So that's a good thing. Everybody has at least a roof over their head. Second thing is we're planning on a Thanksgiving dinner, so if you can hear this or if you're paying attention out there, we're trying to plan a Thanksgiving dinner for the survivors. We're not trying. We are planning a Thanksgiving dinner for survivors. It'll be either Tuesday or Wednesday before Thanksgiving. We haven't had that... We're still waiting on responses from caterers to do the meat portion of the meals. There's a number of people involved. I won't go into all, everybody. I think that kind of wraps up my report. Just been kind of heavily involved with that a bit. That's it.
Okay. Councilwoman Tavallaro?
I'm on the local transportation committee, and we have not met this month because there's some, there's some turnaround on that. So we'll be meeting at the end of the month. I'll have a report for next month. And then I just wanted to remind anybody that's out there live that the high school football game, the high school football playoff game is tonight at seven o'clock. And wear your snow boots and warm coat and gloves and hat and anything else you can find, because it might be cold. And then I would like to thank the veterans that we have working here at the city, but Kim's going to talk about that. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you. So, yes, I am going to speak about that. So the City of Weed employs military veterans in 2022. This is our acknowledgement. So in the police department, we have Mark Blevins, U.S. Navy, 1979 to 1998, and USS Fairfax County. Jonathan Vander Walker, which I believe that's our new dispatcher. Okay. U.S. Army from 2014 to 2018 with a tour of Korea. David Welm, Army, 2010 through 2014, one tour of Afghanistan and one tour of, how did I say that?
Qatar.
Qatar. Qatar, Qatar. Okay. Scott Brigham, U.S. Navy, 1987 to 1991. Twenty, or 2001 to 2017, National Guard. One tour of Afghanistan and one tour in Kosovo. Chris Davis, U.S. Army, 2003 to 2008, two tours in Iraq. And administration, Tim Rundell, U.S. Air Force, 1991 to 1997, tour of duty in Avi... I know. Aviano, Italy. Oh, you should have heard the one I had to pronounce earlier today. I don't... City Council, Bob Hall, U.S. Army, 1967 to 1970, tours of duty in Korea. And thank you all for your service. And also, the Sons of Italy Lodge, 1269, is doing our Honoring Veterans Breakfast this Sunday, November 13th, from nine to noon at the Sons Hall. The breakfast is free to all veterans and active military, and then spouses or guests are an additional $5. So again, thank you for your service. Since our last meeting, we went to a Lola meeting, did we not?
Oh, we did.
Yeah. It was in Mount Shasta.
Yeah, it was a good one.
And it was a, yeah, it was a really good meeting. As you may have seen on the ballots that came out, a lot of people were not running again this year. So they are retiring from public service, and I think there were three from Wayrica, two from Dunsmere, me, and there seemed like there was one other one. I can't remember.
Montague.
Montague? Oh, Montague is having a really tough time finding people to be on the council. So hopefully, we have new people and we get some new blood. Go ahead.
And at that Lola meeting was the PR people from Mount Shasta Ski Park, and they talked about their new lift.
Great view.
Yep.
And then there was...
It's getting snow.
It was pretty amazing, the little video they showed of them building it and the time. Not how long it took, but how quickly. They were saying, well, you had to do this, and then the helicopter did this, and then they did this. And I thought they'd say, and they did that in a matter, you know, they got three of them done in a week. And they were like, and it was a 15-minute turnaround time. You know how accurate you have to be as a helicopter pilot to be lowering a beam that connects to another beam, that there's a guy hanging on to bolt it together? No, me either. Yeah.
Well, but they did say that it took them eight years to get it done.
Planning.
Right, from the beginning. They've been working on it for a while.
Yeah. And this is supposed to be for the more advanced skier. And I believe they compared it to a ski park in Tahoe. And this one is actually at a higher elevation and a longer run, has longer runs than the other, yeah. I'm not a skier. I'm too cold. Yeah.
Do they say when it's going to be open or operate?
Oh, it's operating. Yeah, they, there were videos on their media page of the chair running.
That Saturday, they were going to do the first run of, and they had 160-pound sandbag things that they put. There's, because it's a quad.
It's a quad chair.
Four people can fit on it. And I'm thinking, oh, they weren't going to use humans to try that the first time? And they had four 160-pound bags that they put on and ran the whole thing. I saw that video.
Yes. Okay, so this is pretty much my last meeting as the mayor and on the council. So I just, I want to share a couple of things that I did not know before I got here, especially this one. I did not know that Rosenberg Forest Products was not in the city limits. I learned that being on the council. And when you say that to people, they go, what? No. Yeah, yeah, there, it goes, we go around it, or it's in the middle of us. Contrary to some beliefs, the city council and the city management cannot tell people what kind of businesses to open. If they, if they want to open a gas station, we can't tell them, no, you have to open a restaurant. That's not how it works. We cannot, without due process, take over somebody's property. It's just not, we don't have that kind of control on things. So I, if anybody has questions about anything that they see that they think maybe there's a problem, or they have some concerns, or they have suggestions, it's probably best to just come to City Hall and talk to somebody and ask the questions here and not on Facebook. So I would appreciate that. I'm sure the rest of the council would appreciate that, and I'm sure the administration would appreciate that. And that's all I have. Okay.
Should we give you applause yet or no?
No. Not yet. Next month, you can. I'll come up with something else. Okay. Consent agenda. Has everyone read? And have any questions on consent?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pardon me? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? No.
Yeah, they're going, they're going someplace.
They're rushing the stage. All right.
Did you give them numbers?
Yeah. Okay, so in favor? Say it again. All in favor?
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? All right. Carry. We had no items removed from the agenda, and so we will move on to council business. Collection Services by motion, adopt resolution 28-2022 approving a 10-year franchise agreement with Siskiyou County Disposal for solid waste hauling and related services, and finding that the approval of the franchise agreement is categorically exempt under SEQA guidelines under the existing facilities and actions by regulatory agencies for the protection of the environment. Exceptions as well, there's, there's guidelines, as well as under the common sense exemption, and then we get the statute. Any questions? Any report?
Yeah, you have the contractor here, if you have any questions in regards to that, or do you guys have any questions? Nope.
Still moving forward, and you can sleep at night now?
Welcome.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 28-2022. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Weed approving franchise agreement between the City of Weed and Siskiyou County Disposal LLC dated November 10th, 2022.
I second it.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? Motion carried.
Welcome.
Development by motion, adopt resolution number 29-2022, rescinding adoption of resolution number 32-2018, and setting aside certification of the final environmental impact report, SEQA findings, statement of overriding considerations, mitigation monitoring and reporting project, and approval of the Love's Travel Stop Project.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. What is before you is a resolution that undoes the actions that this council took in 2018 to approve Love's Travel Stop. That included an EIR, mitigation monitoring, I think there was a sign permit, as well as a conditionally used permit. As you know, that action was challenged by the Hammond Landowners Association. And that action ended in an adverse decision for the city and the developer, finding that the environmental impact report was not an adequate informational document for the purposes. And so the trial court has ordered the city to rescind and set aside the environmental impact report and those project approvals of condition use permit. So what is before you is a resolution that does that and complies with the court's writ of mandate. Once this action is taken, we will file it with the court so that they, so the court knows that we are in compliance. And then moving forward, you know, the developer has multiple options concerning the subject property. At this point, in my latest discussions, they have not made a determination about what they want to do with that property. That's a little bit outside the scope of what we're here for. We're really just complying with the court's writ of mandate. So happy to answer. Any questions?
So if they want to put in a gravel pit, it would be okay?
It depends on the zoning. I don't know if gravel pits are allowed in the commercial district.
Too soon.
How about a rehab center?
We had a prison one time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great idea. This whole thing makes me very sad, because our city has had, in the last eight years, we've had two fires that have wiped out 200 homes in our community. And we, this is another thing you learned when you got on the city council. And it was one of the first questions I asked when I was elected. I said, how does the city make money? Jeremy, is that the camera that's on me, that one in front of me? Okay. I asked, how does the city make money? And we make money off sales tax. We don't make that much money off homes. We, you know, we have some tax, most of that goes to the county. We make it off sales tax, and so we have a very hardworking staff here that tries to get businesses to come in our town. And this was a business that was going to make our city money. So when you complain about a road that needs to be fixed, or you complain about the sewer or the, or the lights downtown, or the water, any of this stuff, that's what we would use that money for. And there were less than 12 people that don't live in the City of Weed that did not like this project, and they picked through it like flies and pepper to find something wrong with it. And so now the project is being, is being taken off the table. And it makes me angry and sad that 12 people can do that much to destroy things that we try to, you know, the five of us, the 20 people that work here, that we try to get these things done, and we have people that don't even live here that are stopping it.
Right.
And that's my, end of my rant. It's not, but I'll end it.
For tonight.
Yeah.
All right.
I have to agree with you. I, I'm not even going to get started, but thank you for putting it out like that, Sue. It's definitely a, something that I won't forget for a long time. A lot of work went into that.
And so hopefully, it won't take much more for a new project to come.
And hopefully, Love's tries again. But unfortunately, if they don't, I can't blame them. I want them to. We're a great community. We have great people that live here. We're just unfortunately surrounded by a lot of good people.
Maybe there could be silence. Wish they could, but they can't.
I can, I'm entertaining a motion?
I make a motion that we, excuse me. I make a motion we adopt resolution number 21-2022, rescinding adoption of resolution number 32-2018, and setting aside certification of the final environment impact report, SEQA findings, state of overriding considerations, mitigation monitoring and reporting project, and approval of the Love's Travel Stop Project.
Yes, correction. It's 29. You said 21.
Did I?
29-2022.
Thank you.
All right.
But I second it.
All right. Any public comment? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Staff reports? No.
Joining you at the football game, right?
Yeah.
It's too cold.
I think, I think I say this every month, but thank you again for the Weed Police Department and their staff for just still keeping an eye on us and checking in on what's going on at the community center. Things have really slowed down. It's gotten quiet, not as much traffic, but they're, they're, they're still... And they will, we are closed tomorrow, but they will still be there. So, oh, yeah, okay.
I want to thank, thank you also for, in my neighborhood, especially Stringtown Avenue. There's some efforts being made, and I really appreciate the efforts. Thank you.
Yeah, just please relate to the neighborhood that it, and I've spoken to some of them in the lobby. It just takes time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Things don't just happen overnight, but...
And that's unfortunate.
Yes.
I want to thank the police department and the fire department for, I'm sorry, I said, watching the neighborhoods as far as the ones that have been burned with Mill Fire. They're constantly over there. You see them. And even though I go by my lot and just cry and see the destruction there, they are always policing there and keeping it guarded. And we talk about that as victims, so we appreciate that. That's stuff you don't have to do, and we appreciate that. That shows you care. And you go out to the Lake Chastain areas too, Hoy Road, we see you out there too. It's just, it's just something that a lot of departments would not do, but civic departments doing that says a lot.
Yes. Chief Duncan? Are you getting ready for Santa and his sleigh? And are you started that yet? All right. Okay.
Keep us posted. I want cookies.
Sandy? David?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a heads up to the council. This is something that I emailed a couple of councilmembers about. There's a new law that, called SB 1439, that regulates, that creates basically a new reason why a council member has to recuse themselves from hearing an application for land use entitlements similar to what you guys did, like, for example, with the Love's Travel Stop. And it's based on campaign contributions. So if you receive more than $250, or $250 or more from a developer or from a person who participates in a public hearing and has a financial interest in a development, you need to recuse yourself. So it's so broad that, for example, say the Love's, Love's, let's take that as an example. If somebody lived within 1,000 feet of the proposed development and had contributed within the last 12 months $250 to one of your campaigns, even though that person isn't Love's, if that person came and spoke at the podium advocating one way or the other for the project, that could require, potentially require the council members to disqualify themselves. So it's a pretty significant change, and Cal Cities has already been working with the FPPC to try to get some opinions out that are, that's going to help clarify the scope. And we are also working on a memo for the council members, so you guys can keep an eye out for that. But just wanted to raise it, heads up, it's something that I previously discussed.
So it's in particular the campaign contributions?
It's campaign contributions. In the past, campaign contributions was never considered a reason for an elected official to recuse themselves. It was the basis for, like, an appointed office, so like a planning commissioner or a LAFCO commissioner, because those are appointed. But it was never the basis for recusal for an elected official, because, you know, contributions are speech, right? So it's potentially will be challenged, and it's just, it's just an interesting law that you guys...
I'll have to tone down my, tone down my war chest.
Yeah, all those contributions we get, yeah.
So just wanted to give you a heads up.
Do you guys remember to put your tithing in the envelopes or? You too, Ollie.
City manager, Rundell?
Yeah, Mayor and council, just a quick update, I, just for, mostly for the citizens to know. The arch, our Public Works Department didn't go out and power wash the arch a couple of weeks ago. And John Utteck with, our local tattoo artist with Small Town Ink started repainting. He got the backside done, and then the weather came in, unfortunately. And it may be a few more months before we're able to finish the front side. I wish I had did the front first, but, you know. But he's, he's scheduled to come back and do that. Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Green had mentioned the economic summit. That was a good evening that we had, and actually, as a result of that, there was, I was approached... I was approached by somebody who is going to be passing along our information to some developers in the Bay Area that may want to participate in the Lincoln Heights redevelopment as well. So, I think... I think that's going to probably start coming to fruition over the next couple of months. But first, we've got to get everything cleaned up. And first, we've got to go in and repair all the infrastructure that was damaged and the infrastructure that will be damaged once we start with the excavation process. And that kind of leads me into... I just got an update from Brian with OES talking about the process. At this point, he's saying right now, they've got about ninety-six percent of all the rite of entries for the mill fires signed. And... But, you know, there's still just a couple out there. And if you know somebody that hasn't signed, that's very important for the cleanup process to take place because it's free. It's through the state. If you don't get it done, then you're going to be responsible for it yourself as a homeowner, either through your insurance or through your own pocketbook. So, it's important that we let these people know. They did award it to Anvil Builders to do the debris removal and the... To work with the asbestos abatement teams. The snow has kind of held up the process here in Weed. So, I think they are still working on finishing up the McKinney and doing some stuff over in Lake Chastina because they didn't get the snow that we got here. And so, but once that starts melting off, from what I understood, I think Craig had said today that he saw some excavators already being unloaded. And so, and once we know that those are put in place, it's going to start happening fairly quickly. And we know our streets are going to get torn up fairly quickly as well. So, we just ask for everybody's patience. And... But this is a very important process of getting the rebuilding and the restoration of Lincoln Heights started. So, just also, if you're a citizen, and I know we have a few that like to still use the Lincoln Heights as a cut-through, as a shortcut, we'd ask that you please avoid that because we have all this heavy equipment, heavy machinery. That's... Could be very dangerous for those involved. So, we'd ask that you not do that anymore. So, I know that I've been out there a few times with some crews and talking to some folks, and all of a sudden, you'll see a car go flying through there. Sue?
I go through there, and a lot of people are there.
Okay.
And only on Mondays when we deliver meals and...
Okay, I'm just kidding.
And I have seen the mail truck.
Yeah. Well, but I think once they start seeing this equipment, hopefully, they'll avoid the area altogether. Also, to let everybody know, they did submit the Mill Fire, the McKinney Fire, the Mountain Fire, and I believe the Mosquito Fire, the four Ms, all as part of a FEMA proj... Project. They call it the September Heat Dome Disaster. And so, they have... That has not been approved by the president yet as far as the FEMA dollars. That's one of the things that's very difficult when you have them spread all over the state. And then, when they're more concentrated, like a hurricane or a tornado that comes through and wipes out a thousand houses, that's much easier for the feds to get involved than this. So, but they are working diligently and trying to get that done as well. So, but just letting everybody know that, you know, we're working and working closely with OES and trying to get this thing expedited as quickly as possible. And it was mentioned earlier at the pre-council meeting about meeting with developers. We've... I've met with three so far and looking at the area. And I think it's something that... It could be a tremendous project. And as Mayor Pro Tim Green had said earlier, you know, just trying to get Lincoln Heights rebuilt. And my goal is to line up the folks that can do that, the city. As the mayor indicated, things that you might not know, the city doesn't just hire a developer to come in and do everything. That's not how it works. It's a private enterprise, much like the business thing. I've had the same conversation with people that say, why did you let a dress shop go there? We wanted a donut shop.
Yeah. That's not how it works.
Because this is not Russia. That's my answer. We don't live in Russia. They can put a dress shop in a retail place. Anyway, so those are the type of things, but we are trying to facilitate that. And if we can help... Yeah, more like China, yeah. Russia has a little bit better. North Korea, I guess. And I don't think they have donut shops in North Korea. So, anyway, but that's one of the things that we're trying to facilitate and get some interest in. And hopefully, we'll have... My dream would be have two or three developers fighting over who's going to be the one that gets... And also, we've also had a couple of developers talking to each other about joining forces and coming in and doing something. So, the first thing we're going to have to do is get with the folks that are wanting to rebuild and then trying to get an inventory of the lots that are going to be available, that are not going to rebuild, to either be sold or needed over somehow to a developer and building affordable housing, not cheap housing, but affordable housing for our residents here. So, and that's going to be a challenge in and of itself because of the price of just doing business over the last couple of years, the last ten years. Look at how much housing has increased. So, anyway, but we're working very, very hard to get that done. And that's all I have. Madam Mayor?
Okay, and you have something else? Because I remember something else I needed to talk about.
Yeah, but Craig's not here. And I wanted to thank Craig and his crew for the great job they did clearing snow. Because sometimes my road doesn't get plowed, and so... And I'm okay with being last. I just want to be last instead of being not at all, because sometimes I've been that.
To be last.
Yeah, no, I'm good with being last. But I want to be at least in the running. But they did a great job that day. It was...
Yeah.
It was good.
These guys, I mean, was it like a week or so ago? Whenever we were supposed to just get a little bit of rain, and then the snow came in very quickly, they were Johnny on the spot. And that's... You know, so we only have six full-time, you know, and then seven with Craig, employees in our Public Works Department. So, it... I mean, they have to scramble pretty quickly to drop one project, to jump on another one, and they do a great job of that. So, I'll pass that along.
Well, and they did come, I heard them and saw them on my street. And my street is not an easy street. It's a dead end, and it's hard for them to turn around. And so, you'll see them come up and back, all the way back down the street. And so, I don't care that I'm last usually because it is a difficult street to do. But I did remember a couple of things, so... Because I wanted to remind Craig that Christmas is, again, next month. So, let's not wait until the week before Christmas to check the wires on the lights on the tree. We've got a month here. And the... Yeah. And the other thing is, I don't think I mentioned, the community center, yes, is closed tomorrow, but because of everybody that wants it, we will be having bingo tomorrow night, and we are making walking tacos. So, come have dinner. A walking taco is a taco made in a bag of tortilla chips or corn chips. Let's like, remember the cereal, the box was the bowl. That's... Yeah. Yes. They're really good.
Oh, yeah.
I was also reminded when you were thanking people that the Hilo RV Park and Trailer Lane RV Park have been most gracious for establishing places for people to live. It's been great.
Okay. You want to bring us down out?
I do. I want to just first say that we almost made it by six o'clock, and Chuck Sutton would have been very happy, but six oh four? I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody, congratulations to the Cougars on making the playoffs, and good luck tonight.
Go to the game.
Yes, seven o'clock.